Need one of those little voiceovers like they have in Breckland. So, good morning and welcome everyone to the Heritage and Town Events Committee meeting being held Thursday 4th of August. Terry, you are very welcome. Lovely to see you again before we start talking. This is the second meeting in a row. Just to make you all aware of a little bit of housekeeping before we go forward, there will be a fire alarm test this morning. We have been advised by the works team, so don't panic. See if it goes on for longer than we think it should. So we'll move straight on to the agenda items. The first one being declarations of any disclosed or temporary interests. Do you receive any declarations of interest? Are there any please and thank you? Obviously, if anything should arise during the course of discussions, please feel free to indicate them. And then we go on to 243, which is a point of these. And then we go on to the next item, which is the minutes on the previous meeting held on the 9th of June. These have been circulated in advance. Go page 1, page 2, page 3. We are in agreement that there were true and fair reflection. Thank you. So we then go on to the next, which effectively matters to rising actions from the previous meeting. To receive updates on action from the previous meeting, I'm going to go to the first one.
Yeah, I'm in contact with the professor, I think, to yay Katie. Coming to do the blank. It tends to be. Because I think that was the idea of bringing him over to.
I think we work within his schedule perfectly, with obviously liaising with the team, depending what's going on. Obviously, October is practice three months, so really we can utilise it, I think, within that. I don't know if Katie's gotten anywhere with Danny from the organisation.
So Katie's on holiday until Monday, so I'll touch base with her and try and get her.
So depending, but we do some October billing.
I think that would be appropriate. Is everybody in agreement with that? Something we keep getting slated about, that we don't promote their heritage enough, so that's obviously something of going forward on that. The next action point was staff training, staff want to go in-house training to improve their knowledge of the history and heritage of some of the Guildhall displays.
So this came out of a feedback we received, a visitor to the tea room was inquiring more about Thomas Paine. And the staff on duty were, you know, they gave sketchy information in terms of their knowledge. So at the last committee meeting, we suggested that we should absolutely have training to try and equip them with the great knowledge of, we are planning to staff training holidays have not made it sort of feasible to find a time where everybody can take part. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks we'll be doing that. We've also had a couple of staff changes, so we've got a new recruit starting next Tuesday, for example. David leaves us unfortunately on Monday, so it will happen, but it's hardly been a couple of weeks since holidays and like.
Super, thank you. Any questions on that please, team? No, I know there was also an action point under community engagement, community officer to contact members of the public musicians, performers etc. For potential assistance with that town council events. I know some pleas have been put out and so on. What sort of responses have you had?
Very, you know, very sketchy to be honest. There are a couple that have come forward with, I know Katie's pursuing those if she hasn't already. But no, we haven't had many responses, unfortunately.
Super. And then the final one on there will be picked up under a gender item, 251. Thank you very much. So we move on to 246, which is the financial report, to receive Heritage and Town Events Committee financial report for the period ending 31st July 2022. Open the floor for discussion, please, team. So I've been slightly quiet on the collection of Mayor income. I think actually getting nine volunteers for the Norfolk Reading project speaks far more volumes and will have far more ongoing impact in short term fundraising. And as I said in my speech at Civic Reception, I'm not so much after your money, I'm after your time. So that's fantastic. It was a really good day that took place actually last Saturday, so it was really nice to see everybody. So I'm not spending anything on it, just saying. Yes, and obviously the most expensive gowns and accessories, that was the repairs that we requested as early as I think. And then we had the town events spend relating to the Queen's Jubilee. Any questions, queries or comments, please?
Yes, I was just looking at the Queen's Jubilee expenses and that, I think that was quite good. It was visitors from overseas and everything, but had to be after. I didn't think that was too bad.
Yeah, so I mean, there's two lines there, isn't there? And then there's the town events that says they expect to look at these jubilees. So overall, we had bookings, we had events, we had visitors, yes. There are two different trains of thought on that side of things. What I would say is I would encourage people to engage with us when we come on to 249, actually bring your ideas because actually if we're not doing it right, then suggest something different.
More, sorry?
The honorary board. Yeah, so I'll just make sure everybody else to have their say and then I was just going to update on a couple of points. Clearly, that's not been updated. There has been expenditure incurred. It's only a £50 budget. It's literally four or five frames for it. Yeah, we've had that. So Kerry has purchased those and although we are still waiting to actually present the junior college citizen award because unfortunately the recipient was away or taking some exams and things like that, but we are planning to bring it a later date probably at a council meeting just through the during the physical award ceremony. But yeah, so yeah, I don't think it's quite £50 actually, so we'll take a few pennies on that, but that should be updated. The other one, the others are fairly accurate. The thing is, you look at the actual to yield, you know, our budget is extrapolated out over quarters, so it is £12,000 for the whole town events budget. So for the first quarter, it's, you know, it's obviously £3,000, but we do spend a little bit more actually by the end of the third quarter because we don't really have town event schedule for our last quarter, January, February, March. We'll have spent hopefully the whole of the £12,000 on some reasonably decent events. Just to take your point Jenny, what we do is we try and break that down and allocate monies to various different events throughout the year. So we have actually got money in the bank to deliver Christmas and heritage, which are further on in the season. We allocated a budget of around about £4,000, so we came under that slightly and then we'll just move the balance on to the next events. But you could argue both ways. You could say that we didn't have enough money in there to put on a bigger show. Although what we did do, we did it very cost effectively. The civic events were, you know, very cost effective because we did most of that in-house. So we saved, we saved that area of the Jubilee events to try and put it more into the music event. We had some bands come down, two of which were very well received. The other one, a local band up in Kelly, one was well received, but obviously they're they're at the start of their journeys. But yeah, overall, we did pretty well.
Any further questions, please, or comments? Yes, Brenda.
One bit is really, that's a public question. On Facebook, I was sent in the Guildhall address, it was under the heritage bit. And I'm guessing this Norfolk County Council is paying Kate to munch out the children. And it's only that on fiscal due date. It's just that there's a debate and it's saying that it's us. I don't think it's us. I just wanted to clarify. Is that, or is it something Norfolk County does?
I mean, it doesn't really come under this agenda item, but the chair is making, I can add some comments to that. I didn't see that post. We did discuss within the office, Katie's away on holiday at the moment. She did contact me, she was very upset and concerned about that post because it was very specific to her. And we did discuss whether we should respond to that. And unfortunately, in my opinion, we took the decision not to. Sometimes I think we have to, so maybe that's something we have to look at at B and C to have standard responses. But just to answer that, that was a specific funded project and the requirements around that is that they have to be rated for preschool meals. And the implication was that we weren't being inclusive. Well, actually, by the very nature of delivering those kind of things, we were. In terms of the criticisms or concerns to Katie, Katie is funded by an actual grant fund, but that's only for a proportion of her salary. The other salary is for duties that she performs for directly for town council. This, this was an event that you could, you could see comes underneath the Guildhall Heritage Hub, so actually it's probably part of her remit or has the heritage officer ties with heritage and events. So there's this other area that she puts on events, but we pay for that element of her salary. So it's very, it's a shame that people make some comments when they don't understand. Perhaps they should question it to us directly before they make public statements. I think this is an ongoing issue that we've got at the moment, so it's something that we need to address. But in this case, I don't mind saying that everything was done in the right way, through the right process. Yes, she has a connection to an outsider, it's company Magic Floor, but I can tell you, and we're a public body, so people, if they really want to delve into things. Magic Floor do hire our facilities. She runs a theatre school on the Sunday morning. They hire it at the regular high rates. She does other theatre shows and hires our facilities. So for instance, there's a play coming up in September from Ryan or October called Bounces. And that's delivered by Magic Floor. She's hired a colleague at the full rate and like any normal hire. So so I think, you know, there is a, when you see a regular face like Katie and her team, the biggest issue that we have is the perception of the public as when is she delivering stuff on her own, on her own, when is she delivering something up front? But that's not, that shouldn't be a green light to oppression someone's integrity without belting into asking the quiet here to the question, because everything is done above all, I can assure you.
Thank you. Good to have you. I'd like to meet Terry, because I'm also mindful that in both of our wards, there are a considerable number of young people that are on free school meals. This is actually quite something that will have a positive impact on these young people's lives, Terry.
Yeah, thank you. Just on the specific Facebook thing, I was chatting in that particular post. And I'm glad my guesswork and the response highlights what you just said, because I had separately on my own Facebook shared a number of different free school meal type events and had exactly the same comments from other people about the fact that it's just the children, it's got meals such. I'd already had that statement a week before. And it is unfortunate that there are stipulations with funding criteria. There always is, whether it's lottery money, council money, there is always unfortunately a criteria that if it's our own money, we have flexibility with criteria, but with other people, we should answer to them, as they said. And, you know, there is unfortunate to have debate about what the criteria is for free school meals and all the rest of it, but ultimately, if we're taking their money to deliver eggs and deliver eggs. So I would agree with you David, that I think it was a mistake not to respond and to confirm that because it, it's crystal clear, we have to do, you know, that in that way, and this is why, frankly. And even if you can disagree with something, you can understand the process behind it. So I think a response would have been better from the council, but, you know, I decided to respond myself. And just on the Magic Floor bit, I didn't respond at all about that particular comment, because I don't think it's right to in a sort of public format like that. I have separately, however, previously raised with Alan as a finance manager, because people have raised concerns from me about Magic Floor. We as councillors have declared temporary interests. And if you're a member of a charity, you have to declare related party transactions or, you know, income expenditure. Because we all get dead prime abuse of, you know, all sorts of stuff, Charles Borrow. I pay my rent, they pay to hire the magazine as a transactional relationship, but it is documented. And my suggestion to Alan was that actually we should have a similar process with staff. So where we are using staff's corporate entity, you know, business side of it, we document it. There is, you know, I agree with you, there is nothing to hide, but there should be something, an extra layer of transparency on the website or in the accounts that show this is all of the income of Magic Floor, this is what we spend from the expenditure. Okay. Because then it's on par with councillors and, you know, similar to what you said, in the charity world, that's all documented, you know. When you're auditors from a charity, related party transactions are documented. I think that adds a layer of transparency with really sort of town council.
I think it's really useful that, I believe we have the chairperson now here and also the chair of communication. So I think those are the two perhaps things that the responses and that's why perhaps that's discussions are as well. Jen, please come in.
Also, I agree with what Terry's just said, up to a point, is the fact that Magic Floor Productions is a separate entity from the town council. And do we actually ask all our hires to, if I'm understanding from what Terry said, do we, do we have to ask all our hires of Pauls and that to show their accounts, whatever, because if that's a separate entity from what Katie's working at, council, she's paying for hiring each and that, why should she have to pay, show everything else documentation? I can understand what, you know, as I say, I agree with what Terry's saying, up to that point, what right have we got to go into somebody else's accounts? She's got it, that's really like, it has to be like.
No, I understand, you know, the point that Terry raised and working in the arts area that you may have this as well. If you're doing it in the county council, you tend to have to put a related party disclosure in there. But if they're small companies and there are various levels of disclosure, we're not tied up with that really, I'm saying. But there's no reason, I'm sure the information's available already within the council. So it could be, it's just a footnote that we have available, so if we are asked that and it's being open to auditors to look at. It doesn't necessarily have to be promoted out of there, but that information is to hand and can be ready to answer anybody's queries.
The information is published on a regular basis by means of our payments that we approve each month at the finance committee.
Yeah, so I was saying, that is the work between that group and the council. Is that what Terry, is that what you meant, Terry?
I think more along the lines of the related party transactions declarations that I know I've had to make whilst I've been at Breckland because they have purchased books from me and, you know, I've been with them, so therefore it's outside of the grant and so normal, so there's actually a supplier customer relationship there. We are not required to do that in terms of our financial regulations or requirements, whereas Breckland are. And as I said previously, those payments are natural public record.
That's right. And if the payments are made between the council and an outside, another organisation, then, you know, that's, that's no problem. That's no problem. I think it was a feedback on the, it got very personal and it mainly sounded like the council were in covenants with the Magic Floor, so there was a bit of thing going on. That is, that's the way that we, it's not, but that's the way to make it. And I thought, actually, you just walked down the organisation and that's, that's wrong, but I said, I'll comment in a minute.
So Terry and I had a penny for every time that that kind of thing got, we wouldn't have to charge a precept in this town. No, I'm going to say, it's really, really sad when people will create and assume instead of asking the question honestly and openly and directly and not, yeah, decide to call someone out on social media. You know, there are better ways of dealing with things. Mac, you wanted to come in.
That's a new guy in town, the one thing that is really disappointing is when, and there will be loads of social media questions about what the council does. And generally they're on, but that doesn't make any difference to them. The worst thing that can happen is absolutely no response because it just feels, it proves their point. And I think also from a staff perspective, if we've got staff who are upset by posters, then by the council not responding to that, what does that do to show that we're supporting them? So I agree with what David and Terry on this, you know, it's a missed opportunity. We must respond to this. And yeah, you know what, when you respond, you're going to get smaller rubbish come after it. But at least we responded because there are so many occasions where the truth isn't out there and these other stories just keep perpetuating.
Can I suggest that this issue is not within the gift of this committee? It's firmly with personnel, as in a ultimately safeguarding our staff. So it needs to sit there and it sits firmly within the communication. So could we as a committee defer to you two please to pick this up? Is that okay?
No, I'm just going to suggest that, you know, as a gender item, B and C. But a factual statement, just to set the story.
Can, sorry, can I just add one thing, just to allow anybody's fears that are not on B and C in September? B and C are bringing back the next draft of the communication strategy and we need to put that as part of that.
But just, so if we're considering future responding to these type of posts, would it be to respond on behalf of the town council or personnel sort of that? Right.
So it would have to be approved by the town bar as the communication strategy, the media policy it takes and in the town bar's absence, that would defer to the deputy town bar. But the actual physical posting will be done by, by case of occasion, but it'll only be on an approved basis. So we're not advocating that we all go off very emotionally to, you know, to respond to some of these. It's going to be an approved response. We are, you know, we are talking to, to the communications team at Breckland because they do this very well, to be honest. And so we're trying to get some guidance from Nathan and his team, so hopefully we'll be able to improve it in the, in the future, but it is a.
Is that okay? So Stuart, you will have a packed communications team meeting. And obviously if anybody can't make that next committee meeting, would like to feed into the communication strategy, I'm sure you'd welcome any responses.
I think any responses, certainly, I think, be assessed and incorporated as best we can.
Super, thank you. So anything else on the financial report update? Kind of digressed a bit there, but I think it was worthwhile. And that was noted and we move on to 247 to Mayor events. See an update for Mayor events calendar. Oh, that's me.
So I think, I think Kerry's report was circulated at the meeting. Yeah, so within that, she's done a report on both of the mayor aspects. Gender rights of 247 and the civic aspects of 248. So I have the report in front of me, so if there's any questions.
Thank you guys. Yes, please Terry, somebody talk to you mate.
If you're desperate, I'll say. I was just, how pleased I am to see the attention of the Carol service. You know, I've always enjoyed the Carol service and I think actually the public enjoy it. There was some discussion some years ago about, you know, not doing it, but I'm really pleased to see it now.
I'm hoping to invite one of our local schools along to join in because it feels wrong not to, especially with a Merry Christmas. You'll probably not expect anything different from me, but doing a little bit different in terms of readings. And yeah, apologies now, I think there's about seven of them. I'm going to be talking to you all and yeah, winning victims volunteers. Yes, Mac.
Just one, on two counts really, back to Britain and Ruins. I did chat with David before and I spoke to, to attend, their two quotes are, they can't see what's going on up here. I know we've had problems with the A system in Park. I know we've got three, but maybe an opportunity for both of those events come back. The other thing that was mentioned in the past is its programmes not being available, so you can't follow the service. My suggestion today, you know, with this work, is that we actually sell them, you know, just a small fee and then we can recoup some of the cost of that. Also donate some of that to charity. People think about that in a remembrance scenario.
My understanding is in the past, programmes have been done by the Royal British Legion, they have been sponsored. I know one of the funeral directors has done it in the past, different people have done it in the past. Ultimately, the parade is not our party. We just do, the parade is the responsibility of the Royal British Legion. That is why they have a break marshal and John Wayne is responsible for it. We just pick up the reception afterwards.
Yep, absolutely. And there is a problem with that though, in that this town council is the one that's looked at as doing that event. So if it goes wrong, well, they're on the ground, the criticism is on top.
So the challenge then back is how do we resolve it? And I think potentially your opportunity is, is something to be mindful of. In terms of budget, what we have in there, we can produce services quite cheaply in-house.
Yeah, the question is distribution and sale. So Terry.
No, I was going to say, we print incredibly good quality service sheets and everything able. And what I know about paper is, is extensive, I mean, have we explored producing the paper, can we increase the quantity?
Well, again, it's not, it's not done by us currently, so if, as the chair said, it's, it's been. So I think what we need to do is a, is a couple of things. So firstly, just want to answer Matt's point about the A system. I mean, Terry's here and every year Terry brings up the fact that you can't hear and things like that. Although I'd like to think we made a little bit of progress on the last one and, and hopefully we'll do so again on this one. Because that's something we, so basically our involvement on the parade Sunday is to, is to provide logistics support. So what we can do is, I know we've loaned the RBL gazebos in the past to sell their poppies from markets where we should actually be trying one to help them print them if they need them, so we could offer that service. We should offer the gazebos for the markets leading up to it, so they can not just sell the poppies, but also the service sheets. I mean, I, you know, I'm always absolutely gobsmacked by the number of people come down and support that. And there comes a point where you physically can't get into the people to sell, to sell. So again, but there is, there is a bit of a period where there's nobody in the centre of the market because you guys haven't arrived yet. But it could be that almost like cinema styling, you could have someone going around and trying to, you know, sell and distribute the. So there's lots of ways we can improve that. We need to look at that. Maybe, but maybe we will contact the RBL and see how we can help. So, yeah.
I'm not sure that there's a maybe. I think we need to.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Stuart.
Yeah, I was reading through a point through, it's, we perceive that's delivery, yeah. So we do get involved, we do have that liaison with them, do I take over? At the same time, we want them to facilitate to make it best we can. The potential of low quality photocopy, the main thing is, you know, have words to say on, and that's something that we can not think. There are poppy sellers who go around, it may be be able to utilise them to have that restored. There are probably sellers who go around it, maybe be able to utilize them to to have that restored. Yeah, and do you like that song sheet to go on? Get the word, the service theme online, you know, people do have them, they want to support that position that, you know, if you sit there and you, that tune starts up, you'll sing along. Potentially you can, you know, come on, give it, and sing and be participating within it. Because I know, I look around and you see people, we we know a few of the words and then we go halfway through the verse and we're lost again. But, you know, we do really want to try and get everybody engaged with it. PA, I did speak to David earlier in the week about the A system. We need to be committed to our head tour speakers on the marketplace generally. I'm hopeful that we can have something in place by November that will build, uh, increase that. The strength of the choir is something that I always, um, recent years has been. Is whether the numbers have declined, um, the volume is not there and people feel our company are singing long. A hymn, you know, a strong singing. So I don't know whether there's any way we can help the council adds to that choir or is a suggestion to make to them. Some of the other churches getting involved to to be helped by the choir will be the company. But it's definitely a need for the A and a great new there. Um, so hopefully, you know, maybe we'll have the liaison meetings early so that some of the people can be taken forward. Of course, if you've got a screen, the words can be thrown as well. So those, those get to get the uh.
So the screen, the screen, no, no, the screen is, the use of the screen hasn't actually been tried and tested yet. Certainly, if if it does work and it does work in in daylight hours, um, it's massive. It's absolutely huge. So that would be, uh, you know, another huge advantage.
Doing it.
Right. So the direction that I'm getting from the committee at this stage, bear with me a second, Terry, is a sort of P A system. Um.
Assist the choir.
Assist the choir and and that can potentially be done via the P A system. Um, there's, there's a June isn't there anymore who used to really warble of her. Um, but there are some really good strong singers within there, slightly biased, but yeah. Um, see what support we can provide with the programs, um, because obviously that logistics support is is part of that. And I do like the idea of the gazebo and I think the priority is to assess the screen.
Yeah.
Um, because in the nicest possible way, frankly, it's been purchased and it's doing sweet nothing. So either we use it.
He'll 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 say it.
I hope so. I hope so. But I think that's that's something that could be really well utilised um for the benefit of our residents. Um, Terry, is there anything?
Yeah, just to to remember towards. Um, uh, last year there was um an unfortunate situation where the civic parade were inside as the main parade arrived. Are we going to deal with that issue? Because I actually think it's right and proper that the civic party are outside to receive the birthday arrive. Um, I don't know, deliverable, accidental, but it has happened a few times in the time that I've been here. But I think it's right that the civic party are on the steps of the gills, near the gills as people arrive. So just wanted to bring it up now.
I'll be on the steps. The challenges you best not follow me. Because I think, I think, I think you're absolutely right. And now that we have those amazing steps, it's it's perfect to stand there and then process in. So actually convey our respects to those parading.
Yeah. And and the other point was the the um uh, the section afterwards, um, will we be rigorously enforcing the invitation and R S V P only? And we know what people are. They know R S V P are terrible for things like that. Um, and we have to have people away in the end, uh, British years that should really have been accepted. So I just wanted to be clear on what the process was in advance.
So last year, this committee took the decision, if I recall correctly, and Davey, shut me down quickly if I'm wrong, that whilst there were invitations, because we didn't do the huge scale catering, if there were people that came to join us that weren't on the invite list, it wasn't an issue. So it was tea and coffee. It wasn't several bottles of wine. Because actually it's half past eleven in the morning on a Sunday. We don't need a load of bottles of wine. Um, and I think if we follow the whole sort of coffee and cake approach, I think there's more flexibility in that and biscuits. It's not a huge reception. And I think, you know, if if service personnel who are, you know, existing and veterans want to join us, I think that's absolutely right. And I would rather run out of instant coffee than I would of wine.
Okay, brilliant. I'm really pleased to hear that, actually. And then a point is about the Carnegie usage. Last year we were in there, which was great, but it was during the day and all the curtains were shut. I'm sure there's a different atmosphere in the Carnegie or the curtains were, it's much lighter, obviously. But it did feel a bit dark and dingy last year and actually, you know, it's opening up and.
Yeah, okay, that's a valid point. Um, we would like to use it because this is, this was born out of several years ago because we had the COVID convention. Several years ago, uh, when the councillors went off to, um, pay the respects to the, um, back here. Yeah, you know, they had an en masse people coming to the guild hall and, you know, so so we decided, so we decided to make it more of an invitations scenario. We now moved it to the Carnegie. So numbers wise, we have a greater um ability to receive more people there than the than the um guild hall. I know some councillors don't like it because it's a modern building and, you know, it's not near where you want to play.
Thanks.
Um, but again, since then, we've also changed the focus on the catering side. So if it is just sort of tea biscuits, you know, I mean, a glass of wine is, is, I mean, we never stopped a glass of wine, but we were just, so.
They can always go to the legion and support them, can't they, that are.
But those things, those things are almost on tap. Just give, um, but, um, you know, but catering was the issue. If we, if we, if we'd made a buffet for X amount and doubled that cave in, there was an issue. So I don't think there will be too much of an issue this year. And I think we do know, and and the civic officer, um, the civic secretary is always at the P A. I mean, we just need to use a discretion.
But that's the decision of this committee because it's not a mayor event, it's a civic event, that reception.
Yeah, while we still on that day, um, haven't we got a town councillor that's uh attached to affected singers? Because she might be able to talk something and come down to join the choir.
Make a note, oh.
I'm sorry. I must have seen you.
Hey.
The other, the other thing that I think was the feedback as well when we moved to the Carnegie is, is, is that we need to sort of dress the Carnegie in the spirit of of member.
Sorry, apart from the brew, is there anything else planned Carnegie piece? So is anything, is anything happening at all? It might, might be worth looking up. Just, just.
That's the will of this committee.
To make it then.
Yeah, and and that's down to this committee to make those decisions.
Yeah. Look, still, yeah. If you've got, um, even if there's a um uh, a kid who's who's going to put their story of their relative, you know, who served, that might be an interesting piece. I think it's the younger generation to it because these events tend to end up a lot of places. So I think it's kind of nice to bring them into it if we can. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I think, I think there's an option there as well, having a role in power, all the presentations. So yeah, have a cup of tea, including military links through the years, plus more modern aspects of the links with the US bar and all that. So I think we can do something just quietly going along the background.
I'm sure if we talk nicely to Mandra, wanting to make us a very nice display that they might be able to, even just the roller pop up banners about false protection and that's my thanks.
Yeah, the one you saw the.
Yeah.
Reception you get.
Yeah, I just think if that's possible, that would be, and it makes it relevant, doesn't it? But are this committee happy with that more relaxed tea, coffee, biscuits, rather than some just sandwiches and wine and it's an opportunity for people to come together, share stories and memories, make connections, yes.
Stuart, remember this, we've been here quite a while and I remember when it was only wine available, no tea, coffee. I had to ask for a cup of tea at some point or whatever to remember and something.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just mindful that actually it is about that. Continuing to bring the community together. And actually, if we can do that, it's far more relevant, isn't it, to our community and all all aspects. And I'm just always mindful that the choir never seem to get cake either. So, you know, just need to make sure that people do come on. And to be fair, most people won't. A lot of people do tend to go into the legion first because they want to support them. You know, some people go straight home. So it's not like we're going to have the whole effect for descend on us now. But they're out there, clearly going to. But obviously, the Carnegie has a maximum number that it can take. So if we were to come anywhere close to that, we can't admit everybody in the town in because it is finite space, but is the committee happy with that way forward on remembrance reception?
Absolutely. We need to make sure that we advertise exactly what's available for whom, what timings are, because we all assume everybody knows, they know, they won't.
Yes, no.
Yeah.
And again, I think that falls even just the support of the RBL. Okay, um. Yeah, um, did we want to come back to reception whilst we're here or has anyone got any questions on that? Again, obviously that's organised um by the branch of Rafa. Um, and I know there are conversations at the moment. Um, and again, we arrange like refreshments of the service. And that will be for those invited guests from that, so we just facilitate that for them. Um, the second part is kind of blending those two agenda items, aren't we? So apologies. So civic events twenty twenty two, upcoming events, Heritage Festival and Christmas Lights.
So you'll now start seeing the um promotion in earnest at the heritage um festival. I mean, there is the heritage open day activities that are highlighted in in school. Um, and we are very well represented across the town by various different organisations and groups within that. Um, so again, they are being distributed through throughout the town. Um, but over and above that, we also usually put some additional events on. Um, and again, there will be some theatre type productions from outside theatre companies. So Vigil will be pleased to know. Um, but also, um, the two weekends, on the first weekend, uh, we are delivering markets of the future. Now, um, I'm afraid if you ask me too many questions about that, I'm not, I'm not privy to too much of the detail. Um, that's the heritage events team, Katie and Amber that have been pulling that together. Um, but it's, but it seems quite exciting. It's, it's a bit of a um a weird description for it because apparently there's an organisation from Norwich coming in that you'll be running around the marketplace with B R headset units and things like that. So, so that's, that's happening the first weekend. The second weekend is a steampunk event. Um, and both of these were actually um highlighted in our, in our Gibril Heritage Hubbit through the N H L F. Um, so again, it's a two day weekend, uh, and there are Jelf Bar Museum, uh, will be coming up with their engines. Um, there's musicians, um, stalls and and whatnot. But that's caused a real um interest in the steampunk community. So we should have lots of visitors to the town over that weekend. So I'm sure people can come along and enjoy it. In terms of Christmas, this year, again, we're starting to pull that together with more detail now, but just as an overview, um, the theme this year is Christmas films, movies. And at various different points in the town, they will be, they will represent a particular um Christmas favourite. Um, we will be bringing Father Christmas in by the river again. But we want to make a bigger event down by the riverside. So we are talking to my cinema. Um, and um, and London cover lights, children's also. Um, so we'll be doing more when Santa arrives. And then he'll move through the town. I am looking, well, I have applied to close off Welsh Street. Because again, at the top of Welsh Street, um, there is a safety issue. So people crossing over High Street into the marketplace because the switch on again will be in the marketplace. We just need to improve the safety aspects of that. So, um, for the daytime leading up to ten o'clock at night, that road will be closed. Which you can also host other stalls and rides and things like that. So hopefully we'll expand the offer. Christmas line switch on will be from the Stamps again this year. And again, um, we're looking at a slightly different presentation, again, movie themed. Um, so people can come up and enjoy um the events from uh three o'clock, three minutes break up through till nine o'clock at night. Um, so a little bit more detail will come to light at the next meeting. But I just wanted to give you an overview of what the theme is this year. Um, any questions?
Yeah.
Can we, I have to say, I got rather excited when you mentioned the whole um Christmas movie theme and I do like to do good window displays. Um, is this something that we can encourage across the town to do themed window displays? And can I bag my now?
So I don't want to get too much, because I've talked to some people about specific films, which will be more relevant in certain locations within the town centre. But I think that's the intention, to go out now with with that idea and see whether people would buy in. Window displays are brilliant because it gets the whole um High Street involved. Um, and there will be various different points within the town centre that people will be able to stop and, um, so it's, it's, you know, it will be a real focal point so they can interact and engage with it rather than just walk past stores. Stores will be part of it, obviously. Um, we have also spoken to the Salvation Army because uh one thing that was fed back from last year is that they liked the more traditional aspects of Christmas and Christmas music rather than the latest top ten hit. It was a bit too coffee in some respects from the DJ that was bearing from the loud. So again, we've spoken to the Salvation Salvation Army and they are going to bring their band, Salvation Army Band, which is a bit of a a coup at the moment because, you know, they are disparate. They will have to come together, but we've put them in for our Friday night. And they will be at King Square Performance Area, the evening. So that will be their little area with a movie scene around the situation. So that's quite nice because I always think that's really. So we are going a little bit more traditional.
Yes, please.
Without the toes of marketing communications, is there a sort of specific marketing plan with the events that are coming up in Zelton?
So in terms of the autumn or?
Well, yeah, I mean, those ones that you mentioned, the um Christmas lights, they both sound great. And where the communication, what we do on events is one of the processes.
Yeah, so again, um, so in terms of most of this, it's it's already out there. Like I said, we've got events in and around that. So again, from next week, um, heritage will be ramped up through to the first weekend of the ninth of September. Um, and then once we've got more detail in around uh Christmas, which will be within the next two or three weeks, um, we will start pushing that out because clearly there's a lot of competition out there for various other towns. And there's only certainly weekends that you can turn your lights on. Um, so we want to make sure people enjoy that. There is going to be a marketing campaign. Um, and hopefully, as you are a member, Stuart's a member, Brenda and Jenny. Um, we are, we are always improving the marketing communication and I've done, I think, over the last couple of months since Hazel joined. So, uh, so there will be certainly a campaign around both.
And will that be digital or other?
Not, not necessarily. Uh, we are looking at um uh leaflets and things like that on a more regular basis. Um, because, um, uh, we've got more access to shops and things like that. We are going back out to the shops a couple of years ago and looking them, uh, looking to them to have leaflets and displays uh in their retail premises. So I think the team are talking about twenty within the town centre and and around.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, pleased to hear that, Davey, that we, if we can have a little program, the timetable for the days and what's going. Take away, so we hit this top and then build bridges. Just conscious that one of the other Christmas we have in terms of Christmas lights switch on is engaging the all aspects of the town centre. So obviously down the riverside area, I don't know if them co area is going to be open or any of the new. Hope shops will be opened then. But if Father Christmas is riding by the river, yes, it'll come in that way. But what we're doing to, once he's gone, keep those other. And that's linked, so simply the ancient house, White Hart Street, you know, they're open to probably damage for what they need, what deserve.
Yeah, so, so in terms of, um, the riverside is a little bit easier than White Hart Street. Simply because we can't close every road off. Uh, and White Hart Street is one of those very narrow. You know, narrow paid streets. So, um, so, but we, we are conscious of the fact that we go to a lot of effort to bring Father Christmas in by the river. And he almost jumps on a, um, a sort of a land trader's sleigh. Uh, goes through the High Street and then decamps at the marketplace. So there is a school of thought is why we bother? Why don't we just start and finish to the market square? So we are conscious that we have to engage with more areas of the town centre. We will, um, as we always do, liaise with other groups such as the Ancient House Museum, Charles Borough Museum, Dan's Army Museum. Um, it, but it's dependent on what what they want to do as to whether we can, we can promote too much of that. But what we are going to do is have more of an event down by the riverside and that's both sides of the river. So, uh, and then the King's Square Performance Area and then on to the Market Square with stores up the High Street. So I think we've committed a bit more of a budget to this, um, this year. Because I think we want to make a bit more of a, um, uh, a show of Christmas lights switch on. We invest a lot of money in the town for others that are reducing their budgets. We, we've, we've looked to try and retain ours and and put the lights on. But we don't actually get too much benefit from our Christmas switch on. So that's something that we are committed to changing this year and it will be more of a town centre event. As I said, I am going to try and close down Well Street if we do that, that we can, we can pull it around to the Carnegie apron as well and get the library more involved. Uh, I know the guys at the kiosk, um, I know this is Christmas time, but why not? You know, the guys at the kiosk is, uh, going great times and have great ideas. And I'm sure they'll want to be part of it as well. So, yeah, let's make it a town centre event.
And if you guess, um, all those sort of things happening, it will become more of an occasion. Many people might just come to watch the light switch on, they'll stay maybe have a drink or, you know, walk around if shops are open, do a bit of shopping and that's all.
And that's the idea, just, just as we said about remembrance, you know, I'm gossiped about how most, you know, a lot of people come into the town. You think, do you know what? Within an hour, lots of them will disperse because they, you're right, there's not enough to keep them there. So that's what we need to concentrate. I think these little theme zones hopefully will do that because there is something to do.
Yeah, I saw something on the, or suggest that, or suggest that switch. It's a lot like seeing it bigger, so to take some mulled wine, taking a wine. Yeah, that's a good idea. Anything further on Christmas trees? There's so much to talk about it.
Remembering last year, we did a craft fair in the Carnegie with some music. And I thought that was great. However, we didn't actually get as many people in there to appreciate all the effort gone into that.
Yeah, and and actually that was a third party that delivered that to a craft fair. Because we couldn't do what they traditionally do in there, which is a children's choir. And to be honest, they, you know, I mean, blimey, you know, I had to, I had to. Shadow the wife at one point, she would buy from every single store and it was costing me a bloody fortune. But, um, there were some really lovely stalls within the, within the Carnegie. And we didn't have enough people because, as we always say, the Carnegie works really well for big events. Being on a sort of a quiet, uh, sedate street in the, in the cage lane. But it doesn't work when you've got something that you really want to promote, get footfall in. So if we close down Well Street, have more activity in Well Street, we can bring them on to the Carnegie apron and we can obviously promote the Carnegie. So people will naturally progress round to that area rather than, um, miss the advertising or booklets or whatever we do to mean that, you know, there's something in there. We did allow people to come over the crossover bridge and into the Carnegie last year. Um, and that seemed to work to get some people across, um, but it needs to be done in a different way. But again, most of these areas might have, when you look at, um, you look at the Olympics, you've got these meeters and greeters, those people that tell you, have you been down to the, uh, we're on Thirty Fourth Street down at Seven. So, um, we need people like that as well. And that ties into something else that we are developing, which is our heritage ambassadors slash event. Um, event supporting, if you like. Um, so hopefully people will be pushing people and moving people and signposting where things are. I think that's going to be a real advantage as well. But it was such a shame because there were some really very good quality stalls in the Carnegie last year.
Any further questions on that please, team? I will round up because we blurred those two agenda items just going twenty eight April, Mesbourn. Just a reminder, um, and what will also be happening and hopefully, um, I'd like to utilise your networks as well. I don't think a Meryl Christmas card with me grinning like an idiot is really the right thing that anybody, member of the public wants to see. Um, so I will be doing a Christmas card competition, thank you, Terry. Um, which will be hitting schools and hopefully social media at the start of September. Because I'm mindful that whilst we can hit the schools, some of our young people do go out of town for their education. And I'd like everybody and all our young people in there to be able to access this. So we'll be doing a Christmas card competition. That'll be finishing up just before half term in October to allow printing. And that's, and obviously the plan is, is for the Mayor's Ball invitations to go out with those Christmas cards as well and start that promotion then. Because as we know, we need to promote these things early. Any other questions or queries before we move on to looking forward to next financial year and town events? In that case, we'll go on to the next gender item to discuss the proposals for town educational for twenty twenty three, twenty four. Because obviously we need to start working on what we're doing and then working out how much it's going to cost. David?
So, um, yeah, this agenda really is to try and assist me in terms of budget sense and setting process that goes through in September, October, November. The problem with this committee, in as much as it is a five month meet, um, we lose one of those opportunities to to talk. So as much detail that we can come out through this discussion would be great for me because we come back in, uh, October. Um, we are really going to need to sort of try and format that fairly quickly. So we can, uh, bring town council going forward in November. So we have one mind, sorry.
Brenda? Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just remembering an email that came out and mine has already been fixed for personnel. We've got to a three year, five year business plan. Is that something that we need to do with that?
Um.
On this.
Listen, well, that's not what, that's not what the agenda items are asking for. It's literally to feed into into next year's budget process. I mean, whether we, whether we do that in the future. And I think one of the, um, one of the, just as I deviate slightly. Um, one of the things that we're looking at as a team, certainly in the, in terms of the Guild Hall. The N H L F funding comes to an end next June. So we do need to put a business plan together to, to, um, to test the viability and sustainability of where we go from there. But that's a separate issue. This really is to, I mean, last year we had Jubilee, Heritage and Christmas. And because Jubilee was a bigger event, uh, and we were coming along the back of some of the lesser Covid restrictions, albeit restrictions as they were. So chose only to do three, but traditionally we did four. Uh, I'd like to think that just been talking about heritage and Christmas, that they're almost enshrined in our town events programme. So I would like to think we keep those. It's what do we do, um, with the other two? If we are going to go with four or do we go with three, but allocate a bigger budget, um, to three events and do it well? Or do we go with four and still do it well, but we'll have less spend if you like? And if so, what do we do? So first, the first is, do we go with heritage and Christmas lights?
I think that must be the council.
Yeah.
Christmas means a lot.
And heritage is one of the reasons.
And, and we need to promote our.
People into the town with heritage.
So I think Christmas will be first, second and third because we want to try and extend certain activities and events across the weekend to make it a bit more of a celebration. And heritage, um, again, we want to align it with the open days and the open days tend to be that sort of bit, um, in September. So I haven't got any specific dates for this, this period, but it will be around there. It's also around mid September. So we're looking at what do we kick off with in sort of April, May time? And what do we do as another event that will probably take place in the time between June, July and August? And then lead into heritage to mid September. So, I think.
So I know there's been a lot to talk about bringing the soapbox back. Um, and then that keys in with our engineering heritage and a lot of the work that goes on within the town. Um, I'm going to put it out there, there was the work that we formed up about three, four years ago in terms of flagging up. And bringing the community together, um, and having flags on the High Street, you know, community groups, that kind of thing. So there's obviously the work that was worked up for that and it just happened because of yay, that thing that globally, Stuart.
Yeah. Heritage, yeah, I'll do, because it brings a new audience in and they've got established format and everybody looks to it. To beat that up in the great depth of events that through and the Guild Hall stuff. The other bit is, do we concentrate on one, two, the ten events? Or do we look at ten events as a wider offer over a period, but not so much invested in each one? But we've got the marketplace now that has a venue. And just thinking about other things that happen within the town is the ways we can work in conjunction with, you know, like the Blackfellow, St George's Day Beer Festival. Not everybody wants to go and sit down and have beer. At the same time, it'd be nice to have something on, because the daughter, whether it be back with the, the Night and Dream Marketplace for children or probably a bit linked to St George's theme. But you then promote, St George's Weekend is happening, uh, so we just tank and something on. And then as you roll forward during the year, yeah, and then if you've got Halloween, you know, put something on for the children after. Market place for Halloween, um, come back in the summertime, you've got lots of children running around needing a little bit more about, uh, events going on. So, you know, we tried a sandpit down at, um, the green area a few years back then. And is that something we can put on a month's worth of sandpits and deck chairs around the marketplace with some, you know, uh, if we've got the Sammy Army, whether they do our band concert on a Sunday afternoon. Uh, so I think there's, there's potential of doing lots of little things as town events which would deliver a lot more than one awful event, um, that'll be cost us. Yes. Yeah, so a little bit like, um, the remembrance, we're going to work in conjunction with the R B L, that have their bar open. So we're, we're supporting them. We're not, we're not actually doing anything wrong. But I think when you've got somewhere like the Blackfellow, the Blackfellow's doing the same, you know, we're not, we're not running their event for them, but running something alongside it and promoting what they're doing is business in our town. And that's why we wouldn't do that. You know, because that's only going to give us a good publicity within that community. And then better for perhaps through the market square. So it kind of solves a problem for us when we're looking for events to put on.
So what events do you want on, Terry?
Let's make a plea that we start conversations early with Breckman. I've been quite frustrated last few weeks about these sort of theatre in the priory and something else they're doing, various other things. I think you know that because they're paying the magazine to deliver some literature and all this about all these ones they do. I don't know as a council, um, which is great that they're doing this stuff, don't get me wrong, I'm really pleased they're doing this stuff. But it has got to tie in and work with the town councils events programme in my view. You know, if there are events out by reference, complement on a plan. So I don't know if what's happening in August, September is a one off. If they are planning events over the next year, I could be looking to certainly maybe some in partnership or, you know, things that connect each other. Rather than being two councils putting on two programmes. That's how I do it for the next year.
Um, well, I need to appoint. And when I say only to appoint is I don't really have any information to share in terms of the long term view. Um, there are, there is, uh, just taking on someone, Ed Breckman, who, um, has come from a, um, sort of an events background, what I understand, who's trying to pull some stuff together. Uh, and they've got some ideas to, to, to do various different things. But whether, whether, whether what they're doing over the next month or so is, is it as part of this, um, this launch of their branding or not, I, I have no idea. Um, but there are a couple of events that is going to happen over the bank holiday weekend and then the priory stuff on Wednesday and Thursday. Um, but beyond that, I don't know. Um, so I don't know whether it's a long term then. In terms of, um, this agenda item, it is our events. And I understand, yes, as a town council, we should link in with everybody else. Um, but we can only do that if, if everybody else wants to share their stuff. And I know I'm a bit, a little bit secretive in terms of this meeting, but we do need to now. I don't know, you know, if you're going to go back to flagging up, Jane, the premise around flagging up.
Was community engagement.
Was community engagement. It was almost on the premise that, you know, it was going to be our first event of the year. It was going to be quite early in the year in terms of a bank, a bank holiday, like an Easter or something like that. And it was almost going to be second's open for the season. So Charles Borough Museum, we usually put something Easter opening. The Ancient House Museum will be going into their summer programme, you know, um, the library. Um, you know, everybody will, will, will almost try and launch what they're, they're, they're doing through the summer. So it was trying to galvanise everyone together and have some kind of event that promotes that that is open. We're worth a visit, we've got lots of stuff going on. So we could do that, uh, and that certainly will bring everybody together and hopefully force people to, um, tell us what's happening. Um, it gives us the opportunity to do, um, a schedule of mini events as, um, as Stuart suggested, and then into our heritage and Christmas to pick up the latter part of the year. Um.
Question is, is do we think it will work?
Yeah. And also it gives us the opportunity to, uh, for the pressure on Breckman. That clearly, you know, they are going to do more events down by the riverside, absolutely brilliant. Um, but what is it? I mean, one of the other ideas is, is River Day. Now, if they're going to be more involved in the riverside, then that's something that they can give up. If you are, I've got money to put into the River Day. So it's, it's, it's almost an event that we might just participate in, but it's not our town council events. Um, but we need to know what we're doing, otherwise we're going to waste an element of our budget on something that could be done bigger and better by the people. So it's frustrating.
Brenda?
Well, I was just going back to flagging up, that was done at this time. We've got the market square, we can have tables where children can come along, either under the engines or, um, you know, and do flagging, things like this. I just think it's an event which is cool and it is, you know, we're providing an event for Charles. But I think that would, I, I, I'm hoping for that to be one of the events.
But again, it is, but yeah, as David said, it is critical on that community engagement. So, yes, and, and, and not just, you know, like the museums, you know, potentially the schools, volunteer groups. It's, it's about. The whimsical idea that I had was showcasing everything that's fantastic about that. So, you know, the fast team, yeah, our amazing volunteers, the Salvation Army, yeah, all those different elements. It would be amazing to pull that together. The question is, is do we think we can do it?
If you're going to go for that, we need to start talking to people now and, and, and telling people this is what we'd like to do. Is there the buying? Because there has to be the buying for that particular event. We can do our bit on marketplaces. Because there has to be the buy-in for that particular event. We can do our bit on marketplaces as our element of the big event.
Or picking up on what Brenda said earlier about having a long term plan, is that something that we say potentially could be good for the year after and actually start having those conversations? And then when we're looking at budget setting October twenty twenty three, yeah, we're in a better position to talk about that. No. But we need to take responsibility as well as councillors for engaging with people.
Can I just say that one point about one of the alternatives is so much challenge? And and I did put a picture from one of our so of challenges on the screen. And it is that we've done that a couple of times. It was, it was cut short by by various reasons. I can't remember the exact reason, and then we went into nothing happened for a week. It is. But one of the feedback that we we or some of the feedback that we got was they really enjoyed it. It was a great, great event. But we've done King Street twice now and it's a bit of a boring track straight down the centre. There's no, you know, when you look at other so of challenge events, they've got some, you know, challenges around the the route. And this was just, you know, airing down in street. So some of our, some of the people who were at both of those events said, can we have a more challenging track? Where where would you look? Where would you look at the town centre? We have a very, you know, a very complicated network of streets. And if you close off one, I mean, one of the suggestions was well, street being crucky, you know, that's quite steep. And then when you get to the bottom, you're going into another area. So we'd have to close off two car parks and a and a another road system in terms of rent. It's it's very difficult. Also, the last time we did it, we had issues around the cost of broadband was going up. I can imagine this time next year, it's, we need three hundred and twenty just to just to do what we did in King Street. So the cost of it is going to be quite a lot. So I'm not sure whether that's appropriate.
Alpha got quite a slope to it. We should go on.
Well, someone mentioned, someone mentioned that. But again, you've got to look at how you close and how you move traffic around and things like that. Again, you've got to think about.
On the common, it's.
Oh, on the common.
It's bigger times. Cycle is its option.
Yeah.
Too much rallying in my family. Go on.
I'm using myself. Not exciting, you know, limited by what we've got. And just something else in a phrase, which occurred to me over the Jubilee weekend with what Chris Riches and we did about just how simple that event was, how it worked so well. And it struck me about how we, although we own, we don't really raise it, we don't really do very much stuff down there, frankly. And it occurs to me that a really simple idea would be a teddy bear's picnic on Castle Park. You know, we pay for some children, the entertainers, food stores can pay to have a pitch, but actually something that embraced the castle park and, you know, the Bay Area there. You've got the tour, which is true. The power, um, actually something pretty simple about some say, you know, really good for families, I think.
Yeah, and actually we did have a conversation with Chris and his wife, Tina and I prior to Jubilee. And it wasn't the case of all the publicity that we tried to restrict. We did. It was something that I don't think you realise the imperfections, what the imperfections could be, to be fair. We talked about this in venues and communication. You know, they managed it really, really well. But there are other things that need to be looked at, such as bitter and all the rest of it. And again, absolutely first class, you need to pick that. Castle Park is simple. We, I remember we had a teddy bear's picnic one year in here and it was it was really well attended. Castle Park would be great. When we had the Tom Payne two hundred, we had a Punch and Judy up there and things like that. So you've got the tournament, which is a bonus. And if people do get bored of the tournament, so and it's also got that natural incline as well, if you want to do a bit of entertainment. So yeah, we could do that, but it could be one of several scheduled events. It doesn't have to be on the market.
No, we're not looking for big ones. We're looking for, we've got two.
It's your choice.
I like the idea of a little small event because, you know, people might miss the big events in the town because they're they're working there. But we're not going to do that big thing. This is it. But to know that when you come back, there's other events throughout the year. And they're not on top of one another. Because, you know, when you do it, it's on top of one another. People go down there. And it's rather if we can split now, Ted Bear's picnic sometimes, love the idea, you know, happy shows, drawings, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I spent a lot of time in Germany with my grandchildren as a small one. And I quite like the idea that near every weekend there was an event to go to. I mean, young children have got short attention spans, a couple of hours during the sun. It's just enough for them. So and just have something that parents couldn't say, oh, this weekend, we'll just toddle off downtown and have a look at this children. I think that's just lovely, sort of smaller events throughout the year. But, you know, it's not going to cost an arm and leg to go and attend. And it's just somewhere we can go for children weekend.
Stuart.
Yeah, I think the feeling, the idea of number of events seems to be taken off. You're suggesting that we are staying with the team to come up with a proposed road cost so that we incorporate that with our budget. But by doing that, I think you then look where there are holes in certain times. So with the cost of May, what can we do there? And you know, sometimes I think, I think to the size of what we've done, a lot of the ground are four, but you can't, it's like, you know, have and like, got a Punch and Judy public show that can be used not just for Punch and Judy, but for the other themes. If you've got that. Got the big screen that you've talked about, the Eurovision Party, you know, on the marketplace. Just lots of them. So I think by putting a programme together, you'll come up with ideas. Thinking around certain top times of the year and we can throw some costs against it. That would be quite useful, is going to be to consider next meeting.
Get Terry out hosting issues for Eurovision.
I'm not hosting issues, we're going.
I didn't mean to steal your event there. Just ideas that are running around.
I'm so glad you said exhausted business. So, yeah, we go through. So taking the step from this committee then, that you would like a series of smaller events more regularly put on that are accessible for all. Is there anything that you don't want to see delivered? Or are we kind of, we're open to everything. Let's make use of the spaces that we have and let's just be imaginative but accessible.
I don't like where, you know, I've put it, haven't they? I've asked, have they? So if you want the answer to small events, what would you like to say?
So I I was just about to say that we have talked about some of the feedback and on social media was that, you know, certainly post Jubilee. You know, why don't you ask us what we want? So if we put together a a draft schedule of events, send it around to all the councillors to hug that feedback and then say, these are some of the ideas that we we we've thought about. Can you guys add in more to it? Get involved, you know, and maybe start that project. Because the trouble is, we've got to have something almost agreed before we come back in October. Because October is a case of, yes, in principle, we've already agreed this. Let's sign out the costs.
One, you know, when we say small events, it could be a person out there that'd like to put on a small event, but they haven't got that package. So they come to you and say, well, I can do this, this and this. And I've got to make my friends and people, you know, I'm going to do it for you. And you've got your event.
And I think that's.
You've got the volunteer then.
Absolutely. You know, engaging with the public and and asking what they want. Stuart.
I think on Terry's point as well, whilst you're doing that, David, the team needs to contact the likes of Breckman, Nathan Hens and all those people, what events happen. So that A, we don't go against them. B, we may be able to complement the offer that they're doing. Think that's happening. I know they're looking for themselves, but at least we made the effort and that's our bit.
And actually, that's, you know, Chris, on, did go down well with public, you know, one of the the teddy bear's picnic, you know, it will help you with it. And actually, it'll do a lot of work for us.
It's about partnership working because as we know, no one person can deliver everything at the moment. So if we can work with people, we think that's key. So David, from those discussions, do you have enough to go forward?
Yeah, the only thing I would just, like, a definite steer is, yes, I have. But is all of this season going to be over with flagging up? Or are we going to go straight into a series of mini events with heritage and Christmas to round it all off?
I would suggest, my personal view is we don't have enough, we don't have any time for flagging up.
Okay. So let's do the mini events.
Do you feel about that?
You're asking for volunteer to get back to the Arctic level. It'll be gone by the time advance. Do I understand right that our next meeting is October? So that just made me realise the scavenging approach that I've got, that actually Battle Brim is only six weeks away. So is there anything that we wanted to do before that meeting? Is there anything to change before it happens? Because we're not going to have that meeting.
See, the problem in the meeting of this committee is that we just provide a reception.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course. Pink egg.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. But, you know, we're talking about, you know, what we can do to change, improve, develop.
Is there a event? It's working in.
So so as an example, my question would be, has Rafford offered a place on the the market square a couple of weeks before? So they can do their Rafford store.
No, but that but that is, but that's something that we can do. That's a that's a conversation we can have outside the committee because it's just trying to support people.
Yep.
It's not a remit of the committee to actually. So it's not going to stop us doing that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So but we don't want to actually grow that any bigger than it is. As I'm saying. That's fine.
Yeah, because it's not ours. It's Rafford's.
Yep.
Um, so you have enough to go forward on that one. So everybody contains the most of that agenda item now. Excellent. Okay, so we move on to two five oh twenty two, the Heritage Trail Leaflet, to receive an update on the preparation of the Heritage Trail Leaflet. And that's how it is, Stuart.
Um, this is what things pass across to us from amenities, turning to to get the heritage markers placed. I have identified three, but we haven't put them in place. They've missed the original. I think two of the new ones have actually been priced out. So so I had a conversation with David about this. The the original trail was put together. Obviously, you're familiar with the family leaflets we have. It exists as red one being the Heritage Fund, which is the one that's based was a precursor to that. Uh, which is a slightly different layout. And that's where the Heritage Trail came about. And so those markers, it started at Ancient House because that was the tourist information centre at the time. And then came down, touched the plane, then up a bridge, Old Berry Road, then playing to British Walk. So I had a look at it and I was just having a conversation with David during the week. But I think the first thing is, yeah, let's get those markers back in place and relaunch it as I've described by the amenities to continue. But I think there's an opportunity. Where do we go forward with our trails? Because we've got BFVR doing a couple of trails as part of our job. We touched on the sculpture trail, we've looked at that. We've got Ancient House out on a limb somewhat up there. And I think you need to have trails that are certainly not walking around rather than just repeating the same bit. So you've got the Tom Payne birthplace at the top White Street. Do you come up White Hart Street, the Tom Payne birthplace, down Eighth Street to the priory and then come priory through Mista Gate? And that's all. I think there's a little bit of work in the same way we're going with the future for the heritage trial. But in the short term, let's get the markets back in place and we can do a little launch. We talked about with BFVR, they've got a mapping facility which enables them to be used in a little more modern format and more accessible. At the moment, printing matter is held and you don't have to repeat that. So I'm going to get the identify, identify the three missing ones. I think the team hopefully get the costs done for those other two that have been priced down and replaced because we've done so much work getting all their victims. And then once they're in place, we'll relaunch the existing trail leaflet. And then I think there's a bigger bit of work to do in looking at where do we do our trails come forward because doing it's piecemeal. But also we have pieces to work on. When Jason Lindley came down and did a bit about the priory tunes, where he just says, in all of that history, so, you know, you need to be doing more. Where is your market? Is it, you know, the category that comes in for a couple of hours on a late coast or is it people who are looking to spend the whole day here? So I think, yes, that's one way of looking at it. But at the same time, you can cater for both of those with a friendly. He was suggesting that you've got the priory one end of the town, the castle, or the other, the two big hitters. How do you link to, do you have a main thoroughfare coming up, Castle Street, King Street, Mista Gate? So you've got that magic, you know, Bible. That type of thing. But then you need to give them a route back. And then do you take them back by Riverside? Got two extension camps, two spring walks. So I think, you know, I don't know if this ties in with the branding, but most of it is the branding that Debbie raised, isn't it, right? So because if they've got something planned to do branding, I would think links to it. But the steer that we had when they took a presentation before full cancer the other week, we couldn't really pin them down to what this branding thing does. So I'm sorry I'm talking. I'm just trying to end a bit of thoughts. So action wise, let's get the markets back in place. Launch the existing heritage leaflet, but then I think it needs to be doing a bit of.
Come to those then, Stuart. Obviously, you had one big, you know, you've got one leaflet, this one, this one. So you're going around, so you're going around it. Do you split it up and say, route one, route two? Because it might be that somebody's only got an hour set in. They're just going to do the priory, they're going to, you know.
I think what you do is you have cut off. So you, one that exists, that red one, precursor to that, you just did have some points. You have a decision to make. Do you want to cut this point and come back in the short?
Yeah, I just had to know. When we were looking at the trail, we actually got some advice and exactly as Stuart said, you you have a basic trail, if you like. But then if your thing is the priory, you go off to the priory. If your thing is Barnham Common, you go off to Barnham Common. And so, you know, you could spend your day if you wanted to, it'd be really hard. But there's, you know, choices to be made and where you start. And I I would be really pleased to see the Heritage Trail relaunched. I mean, we spent about a thousand pounds of immunity street furniture budget upgrading all the lecterns you're still on there and replacing all of the roundings. And I noticed actually some of the guns, Stuart, some before we had them back in, you know, fairly robustly, so it's a good job you're happy. But they are resident now rather than what were they before? Were they bronze? I can't remember. And so they are resident. I know we did all the way more than we needed. So there are spares. But we've got the trial, but it exists. It's actually, you know, it's all still as accurate as it was ten years ago when it was put in. But nobody knows about it. And I think the actual tribal leaflet itself probably needs a bit of updating, a bit outdated. So let's get the leaf updated, let's get it reprinted and relaunched. And it's, you know, relatively easy thing that the town council can do because the trail exists and the markers are all there. And relaunch that, I think, popular thing.
There was just one thought. He was asking about the, Chris was asking about your market audience. Well, the market audience will only be those who know about it. And another way around is about is even on those, you can retrofit your archives. So people can go there. You haven't got to have a massive leaflet then. So people can go, you haven't got to have a massive leaflet then, you can have a lot more detail than the leaflet is on there, uh, stuck behind it. But that information can also be available on your town website. So it can say, you know, the whole history of it is there. This is what you could do. You can automatically follow it around on your phone, which is what most people want to do nowadays, or you can leaflets.
And that is what I've been talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm. No, just kind of, and one of the things we've been working on amenities, there's an audit of our street furniture. Because you'd be amazed what the town, sorry, litter bins, dog benches, also empty notice boards, signs, all the rest of it. Um, and we're actually looking at how they can all be rebranded and complement each other. And so when you go to places like, you know, Bath or a few other places, even litter bins, you have your archives on them for tourists, you know. Log on here to find where your nearest cafe is or your nearest toilet is. So it's, you know, it's free. What we would like is all of the street furniture that we own complimenting each other and, you know, actually communicating with each other.
That does raise a really good point on us, why in all of our heritage street furniture is absolutely covered in feet at the moment.
It's, it's, it's really bad.
And, you know, when we talk about having heritage events, it's great doing that and having people who, if they walk in and see that, you know, and a lot of it is, is, you know, um, quite photographing now, you know, sort of getting involved and the more they put on, the more, you know, the more they're trying to outreach each other on it. So unless we have a big attack on that, particularly before we have our heritage events, then, you know, it's going to reflect badly on town because there are companies, great thing, but what have done because of all the stuff written on it?
Yeah, I was just gonna, they, the town team, uh, here have a constant battle at the moment, removing graffiti. And then as soon as they go and clean it, it's, um, an attitude again, it's a real harmful group of views. We have a difficult CCB issues on some of them. Um, what I'd like about Nick and the team do is they do report every incident. But I don't always think the police take it seriously enough. So I wanted to make that point with your sort of stand out on. We are constantly, it's costing us fortune practically as a councilman. What Nick is also doing now is documenting vandalism is costing us because we need to be saying, we could have ten more litter bins, but we can't because we spent nineteen thousand pounds on, you know, graffiti removal. So we are documenting that and we are reporting it. Um, you know, I probably do that fine photos, email and stuff.
Yes, and Nick and the team are working incredibly hard on it.
I did mention it, Nick, but that I was given a load of, uh, feety wipes, white records. Um, and they're, they're really easy fix for our plastic bins, uh, things like that. To be careful on some surfaces because I'm taking other packing on. But those kind of pens that they're using come off really quickly. Now, you know, not just the council officers, but councilors, you know, could take a few of those, put them in a plastic bag. And actually, we can get involved in doing it as well because we're all getting out around our own wards. So the thing about the feet is, the first type that goes on, if you remove that the following day, you stick with it, it just, it just takes the rug out under their feet. If you leave it, it becomes, you know, as it is now through the roof like that.
So.
Sorry.
Going back to Heritage Trail Leaflet. So if there is a relaunch wanted, I mean, this decision is to note, um, but actually, you, this committee needs to consider the cost, um, because it will have a budget implication.
Thank you. Because of the cost of it.
Super. So we move on to two five one twenty two, civic links to town. To understand the current status of the twin arrangements and the council going forward. So as you will be aware, um, the Thetford Twinning Association disbanded now. Free use? Yeah, it must be about that. Um, so we are still responsible for maintaining our twin civic links. But we've just not, and that is very much the civic side of things, rather than that friendship side of things that's all, you know, staying and that kind of thing. Um, what Jubilee weekend demonstrated to us is there is a renewed impetus from our twin towns in Europe to renew those links and continue those, but also to do it to benefit residents. So we had considered conversations about how we make, um, twinning relevant to our young people. Um, so I've brought together, um, some of the team in Lesley, uh, with some team at the high school, and they're working on how to move that forward. Um, we have I think the branch was completely gone. I mean, we have a responsibility to maintain that. It's how we maintain and do it. Um, and clearly the Jubilee was a fantastic opportunity to invite people. Obviously, only Lesley and Netherlands were able to come. Um, Skavina and Hurt were considerably involved and still are with the challenges from conflict in Ukraine at the moment. Um, and within this item, there is also to discuss and any actions and approval of official visits to Skavina in September twenty twenty two. This was scheduled to be, um, we received an invitation to Skavina the weekend after Jubilee, um, which I was really, really excited about. But then, again, we were over eight, overtaken by events. Um, and it's been postponed to September, which is actually the heritage open day for weekends. I've been, again, invited as mayor, but I'm unable to attend some already booked for events over that weekend. Um, so I asked Stuart if he would be interested in representing us over there, and he is. Obviously, that requires the approval of this committee. Um, is there anything else you'd like to add before we go on to the permission? Um, in terms of civic links and twinning, because obviously we had huge conversations over that weekend.
I think, uh, Terence always said this, we, if you do it seriously, we maintain it. There's a cost to whatever we do, there's been given two sentences of relief, whether it's paid for by the public or whatever. But it is something that we've invested time and effort in in the past. And I think it's likely to continue to improve some way we've left, if you're new. You've got friends in those countries. And potentially, you do create a base of interest for those people living in those spaces to come and see their twin town, to boost our tourism and potentially business, you know. Be one of the things we have been criticised about. We don't really look at the, the business opportunities that could be with um, businesses here working, contributing, those other establishments. Um, so I think there's a big piece of work there. We're gonna expand that aspect of it. But for the moment, we're just holding the ball, holding the baton to ready to hand it over to the next group. Um, that's probably all we can do at this stage. But, you know, it's not going to die. You do need to think about how do we embrace the young people. And I was talking about, uh, online gaming, which allowed um, them to get involved in the twin town without incurring the cost or time aspect of coming under. Uh, and I think I think out of the box to try and, how can we engage those people? I think it'd be such a shame if we didn't die.
Absolutely. And I think, anything the last few months have reminded us actually how small our globe is um, and how close those neighbours are. Um, is there anything anybody would like to pick up on in terms of the civic links and our twin towns?
It's nice to get some information out there and remind people why we are linking these towns. I'm sure I've forgotten how long this has been going on.
Yeah. Quite some time, yeah. And, and the, the key aspects in terms of Lesley, um, Hurt, and what was Spike Ness, and that's now changed through. Yeah. So, um, ultimately, the common denominator was that post-war growth period and relocation of people, um, and that development side of things. It's, it's an awful price, but overspill towns. And ultimately, that's what we all had in common. And then, um, Skavina came out, imposed, came out of other relationships. And they're, you know, very, very similar to us, aren't they? Um, so yes, you're absolutely right. And it's perhaps something that we can pick up on, you know, thinking electronically and within the website, um, as that is further developed. So anything else on civic and twin towns?
Just an observation really, I mean, sort of engagement, um, towns over the years. Um, we do have to recognise that they are significantly bigger than us in terms of their councils and their budgets and their resources. We have correlation.
Yeah.
Um, and one thing that does attract me is they have, you know, dedicated staff as well, is to support twinning frankly. Um, you know, they, they do civic quite the way we do, but they have sort of civic staff who also do twinning. Um, so if we are to do it properly, we need to give ourselves the capacity to do that. And the point I'm making is, nurturing those links does take time. And problems with councillors is you can be too dangerous at times, you can have commitments. So I think, you know, we need to recognise that if you want to keep twinning going, you've got to give the right capacity, as in self time, to develop those links and communicate as well.
So that would link nicely into the corporate priorities, piece of work that we're going to need to do in October and feed into the budget side of things. So more thinking caps, team. So in relation to the decision required, um, are you happy for Stuart to attend Skavina, providing it actually happens, depending on everything else that's going on in the world, um, to attend on my behalf in September? Okay. Any objections? I've seen the. Good, right. And then the, um, final bit that we need to put in there is, you need to take it. Um, I know previously, was it you some that took the wooden clock? Yeah. To Janting. Um, that was quite well received. And given that it's the hundredth anniversary last, well, currently the hundredth anniversary of the formation of that forest, would that perhaps be an appropriate gift to take over? Your plan, unbelievable. It went down well once, they might quite like it in Skavina. And they do have a reason. I appreciate that.
I was going to say with my, since Ben raised his crest.
Well, if one goes missing, yeah. So would that clock be appropriate?
Yeah. I think, um, you know, whatever happens on the visit, I think it's really important we communicate why we did that, I saw what the result was, what the benefit is for the people, because a lot will look at it as Barby says, say, what's that for? What's the point of wasting our money? That's what somebody will say. So I think it's really important, you say, you know, keeping those links going, looking at business. You know. But it's important we do maintain it for now anyway.
So any objections to the clock? Super. Can I get you to action that? Lovely. Fabulous. So we then move on to, oh, look, committee priorities for financial year twenty twenty three, twenty four, to discuss and agree committee priorities and identify the possible funding. Over to you, team. You said civic and twinning links. How much do you want to put behind that? It says about town events and offering more on a regular basis, but perhaps smaller scale. What are your priorities? Yes, Jen.
Thing about the small activities, so over, you know, over that time, we got to do all these. If we, if we put that price on, or should we say we've got this amount to spend on that event? And also see if we can get people from outside to come in and do a bit and then do it as a joint venture. So I, to me, I'd, I'd like to see bringing in other businesses now as like a sponsor or something. And then that way, if, even if you've got a group of business people or something, then you turn around, maybe work on the events for the whole law as with the sponsorship in one package.
And I know there was, you know, a, a few community activists that really, really wanted to help us deliver that sort of thing. Um, I think they've been in contact with David, so. Okay, so the committee priorities in that case, are you saying the committee priority is to promote and encourage community engagement with the coordinated delivery of town events?
That would be my personal thing.
Please don't ask me to say it again. I think it's tweaking to, but.
I mean, if we can bring people, people from in the town into it as well, you know, the responses are, are going to be better, or not better, bigger for the, the people that were at the emergency events basically.
And I think it needs to be a strategic headliner that then other things fall out of. So that would be a, a, a varied more regular, smaller scale programme of events rather than large one hits. Um, which then, you know, enables officers to work up those options, of course, when it comes back in October.
Outside. Joining in as well, but not just for the.
But the bottom line is, is what does heritage events, what do we achieve? What's important to us next year? Um, I'll take Stuart and I'll take you Brenda.
Need to set a budget, see what we can deliver with that budget. Also nine, or just that, we will have a new area of the town. We want to reengage the, the King Street area. Um, we'll be out there. How do we get those people looking to effort towards service and that, you know, we don't want just be a door tree up there. I guess they'll go to Tesco, isn't it? We need to offer a program of events that may be engaged in them. It may be, we talk about the heritage of Tewksbury, the Fishers and the ships that these, number of the roads, I think over there would be named after that. Um, you might be going to do a lot of things, but it brings them into the town. Part of it. I think, you know, links with Dennis and bring it to a bill. It's not as far as you probably think. They are still going to be.
But that's what it is, Nick. It's like local, even if it's the villages around the pride or something, it's bringing them in. Because they're all part of sector regardless, put the IP twin or postcode.
Brenda.
A budget is very hard. You never know what's going to happen. But I always believe that we're going by the town event, there's a thousand pounds, right? So you up there because you know that everything that you do is going to cost, I don't know the rate of inflation at the moment, probably sky high. But I think you've always got to put that in. If you don't do it, you don't do it. I think going down the, the list, I'm not sure about civic, I don't know how much more we've got to spend on that if we, we might have to. But civic events, that's going to cost more than you do. Because we're, we're, we're probably, whatever we do now, it's our energy bills as well. So if you do same coming, it's going to cost that more. We're going to be using more electric and gas, everything's got in there. So it, it's looking at that. And I always think you've got a four percent in, that's something to say, I'm going to put that three percent, I'm going to put five percent on that. Because if you don't, if you, if you haven't budgeted for it, you're not going to get it. Because if you, the, the money has just gone elsewhere. So I, I think, you know, I'm not a money expert, but I always believe you have to do a small increase. And I don't care, you know, people talking about the, the council place and all that, but actually, if you're going to do stuff, you've got to get that money in.
Anybody else?
We agree with Brenda that inflation's gone up a lot. I heard on the news this morning, it's going to be ten percent, they reckon. So it's been a huge, huge rise.
I mean, do you say the town event's well, well, it's been put out? I think that, no, it, it is.
If we can take you a couple of steps back, are we saying that this committee's priority, one of this committee's priorities is to create an exciting and varied programme of accessible town events?
Yes.
Okay. So then, yeah, that's, that's the priority. And then the bits fall out of that. Um, so in those terms, you know, we've said, going back to the conversation we had, this committee has said that it wants a wider range of varied, smaller, regular events. So we're given this deal. So we're given this different kind of tasters that we want, you know, and, and, and for a variety of audiences, whether it's picnic, music, whatever. The team now have that so they can draw that up for us. And, and in the same way, when we were talking about Jupiter this time last year, we said we wanted X, that's the price.
Yeah.
And, yeah, this committee and the council subsequently decided that they weren't ready to spend that money on it, so. There's a get out clause, an exciting, varied programme of accessible town events. We said we want smaller and more regular. We now need to see what that looks like. Um, picking up on some of the other discussions that we've had, yeah, is one of the other committee priorities therefore to promote and develop the heritage office offer. Because if it's not, we're not wasting time with the travel leafers. And with just, do you see what I mean? Okay, so you kind of need to do those headline priorities and then the works down and then everything will go through that or am I misreading it completely?
No, no.
Yeah.
I've heard reference in a couple of meetings now about heritage master plan, something like that.
Yes.
I really don't know a lot about it. If we submit that and we are successful, is there funding in that that would have implications on our priorities and budget to do with people? Have to deliver something? I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud. Would we get money to do some of what this is really is about? I'm not sure.
My understanding is that the business economy approach master plan is for enabling funding. So if you get us successful, that will be due to buying expertise to develop the stuff, the potential and the criticism. But it serves two folks aged, I think if we're successful, then we have to have workshops and all this expertise building up a bigger bit, which then could incorporate lots of the, you know, capital intensive stuff. In the short term, no, we haven't got that.
But that's the, it helps unlock. Um, and it's that groundwork and that evidence base that we need to say. So I think in that respect as well, that ties in with that headline to promote and develop a heritage job. And that enables also the partnership work that we've got because, you know, helping develop. It's not just about us, we don't hold all the keys.
So get on back.
Yeah.
Ten bits of priority, promoting heritage priority in your civic links is, is the other priority to maintain development for the future proofing. Um, and you've got a crossroad there that you do a ten bit, you can buy your city into into priorities with one of the things.
Is there wording that we can put in there? Mindful of discussions that we've already had, Matt, right, hold up. Do we need to work out, educate in there somehow? Because actually we, we need people to understand why it's relevant. Us saying that it's, it's a really, really good thing isn't enough, is it? So that, that fine wording on the civic links, twinning arrangements, how can we twinning?
Promote my understanding. Developing opportunities with business and working relationships, something like that. It's great to understand it. Like it wasn't.
Yeah.
Things about celebrating. I was thinking, you know, celebrate the friendship and the, the exchanging ideas. Yeah, with the civic twinning is a celebration of those things.
Um, remember once in a while, and, you know, we didn't have it in state, but, uh, it's near the, God, what, what, same dice ball call? Same dice ball.
Biddlesworth.
Biddlesworth. Do you have that? Well, there was, there's a home that, there was a Polish bridge, the war camp, you know, that's on the edge of Edinburgh. But did you know that was there? No, because I. But it was there and they used to come into the town and that was my home. Didn't have that. Hmm. And a lot of those people then settled. There was a man who's in Norwich, he's settled after coming out, he settled in, um, he, he settled in Norwich. The Polish man and he, he's one of them, he's talking London, he tells his story. You know, we forget these things, tell me.
So as, as a priority would be to celebrate our civic and twinning links and to explore the social and economic opportunities that they could bring.
Things also, but community cohesion as well, because we have a number of these in, um, in.
Doesn't that work and celebrate?
Just, yeah. Learning or just thinking as well whilst Brendan brought that up, the, um, at Rettum, they had the Lord of Service there. Check wise then. And so, you know, I think we, we don't just look narrowly to say, well, between there. Yeah, if you come over, we look at ways of engaging the population. Oh, so within this area, you have a lot of interrupts and people there. So, you know, that, well, that's. Sorry.
No, no.
But it, it does fit more, you say.
So then that comes out of that headline statement, celebrate civic and twinning links and to explore the social and economic opportunities that they present.
Yeah.
Does that sound okay? And then, yeah, those next bits can fall down, so. God, I had a real big flow dial coming. Okay. So in terms of the heritage officer, we've got the trail, we've got the heritage master plan that's already been mentioned, so those are tangible outcomes. Um, the varied programme, David, you've got your challenges on that one. So in terms of action call for celebrating our civic and twinning, we have, yeah, obviously the type heritage aspect of what's gone previously. How are we going to explore the social and economic opportunities that that presents?
I think on Mac, it's good to just get it to the base, so why are we? So the English on website, we've got a little section in Twinn, Twinn Towns, doing these, these people. It's tagged. Tierney or Reeves from, as you like, which engages a girl. It's the same, oh, we're both women. Um, and like shoemakers, the drum people, dirt, do it. But so you get, sometimes you get people, you know, recognizing names and associating them there. And it's really bad that that's true. Um, and, and so you, you, you can get your base, then, you know, they've got a big bag, how do you take it forward? One of the things I think touching on there is to try and look wider to the, to the ocean community links that we've got. By the website, making people more aware of it, uh, and why we've got that. Then engage children, doing it online, you know, and doing something like that. It can't just be schools doing it on game, it's got to be doing it something. So is it the business forum, can host an event for representatives with the twinning to come over? Or is it something, I know in contact with the, the businesses in those various locations and say, we're interested in buying our working as a way to, to just understand top business in that there. So I think there's different aspects. Yeah, I can proceed.
I think if we could work with business forum and they could, um, you know, put it in. Children would actually, um, older children would learn our model, what's going on in the world, which I don't know if these countries. I'll give you an example, I went to Skavina years and years ago and I felt that I had gone back to the fifties because that's how that Skavina was now, but, um, I think that's why cigarettes in the fifties there, you know. But it was really, um, sort of like down now. They're trying to come and market and that has completely changed. You know, the bus to take you to work is run on fuel. Um, it's, 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 I think, it's hydrogen. Right, and that is made up in a factory, so when this people start coming to town, everything they're doing, they love it because it means that they get their bus right up to the. But houses was built and the only houses you're allowed to build in Skavina now is totally eco-friendly, wasn't it? Anything is, is totally eco-friendly. And what an education for our children to download that and then pass it over. So we could bring them over here and, and it's, trust me, talking about some actions that we was doing in Oxford. Don't know where it was.
Electric buses that built the most.
Yeah, so it, it, it gives you educating the children, but also you're getting children to be, um, working together.
There's a massive, um, electric car plant at, at Hert and then there's also a huge hydrogen production place there as well. Um, and then Hert is really internationally renowned for its film studios, recording processes there. Yes.
That's great in Hertfordshire, that'd be honest. Everybody seems to go there to get, and bring their houses back here to be built. And, you, you know, it's, it, it, you're sort of in young children's minds rather than just looking at the normal things that go in day to day.
Hmm. And it could be, yeah, it could be, ship people over the, the school, yeah, preparation or something like that. Sent over there and they can, you know, see that's winter here, you know, even if.
It, it can be done different ways, but I just think it's nice for the children because they mix with each other as well that way. I'm not saying about every year because they live in the junior life, it might be every now and again with the children. I think we, um, we've got the, I would, yeah, so you know, it was a swimming event, wasn't it? I think it was a swimming event, you know, there's just things like that.
Um, just following from Brenda, I was lucky, I got to visit two of our towns when I was there, so, you know, completely agree that, um, it's a huge opportunity. And when I was twelve, I went to leisurely as part of a school trip. Um, so I know exactly what, you know, you, you get from it. The problem is is we can't get schools to do trips down the road, you know, from country, you know, budgets and staffing availability and all the rest of it. But definitely it's good. And when I was met, having spoken to a couple of Twinn towns, one of the things we discussed was, um, sort of old fashioned pen pal type situation where children perfected my right to children in this or this career. Um, and just describe their life frankly and some of the things that they do. At least that could be email technology, but it could be an old fashioned, uh, letter. But it just gets the dynamo going, it doesn't have to cost loads of money to have to travel to these places. But they could just describe, you know, what's it like growing up as a young person effectively versus growing up in, in this, for example. There's differences and actually normally with young people, there's the similarities which, you know, normally jump out. Um, but that would be relatively easy to set up.
Actually, if you're going to Skavina, that's a perfect opportunity to ask and the children from there, keeping contact with children. Because they do a lot of the third world countries. Um, and they back from their send and books and pens and, you know, or, or distant draw country. They keep me attached with the children, keep attached with them. That'd be, um, it, you know, just sort of ask the question. It's not very, I know they've got a bit of badges on us, but it's, you know.
And it's not necessarily the spending of the money is also, as we found out in our discussions, is that just a gift card, right? And I've given it to Sads and, and, and those, what a better phrase, marketing. And, uh, it's, 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 it's never always what one can spend. It's the knowledge that we have and sharing that.
There was a road in leisurely, it's named after Thetford as well, I'll find out Thetford Road.
Yeah. There's one as well.
Yeah. Why? There's no houses, it's no, no talks about. But we don't have any other two, you know. Recognised in that way, but leisurely certainly did.
David, do you have enough? So.
I feel quite thick.
So is everybody content with those priorities and, yeah, deliveries? So then we move on to two, five, three, twenty two, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Covered that with a questionnaire going out. If we were to do this, would you be interested? Is there anything else you'd like to stick on for you? Happy to.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you want to engage with the public on? Apart from the usual communications about events that we've got coming up?
No, I think that's it. Could we, could we do it as, like, uh, we're just going out to ask people? We've got this sort of fence, you know, how would you feel? Should do it like in an age group because you're going to get people wanting all these big massive. They don't call them discos. These in the forest or on the park and music and things like that. Whereas if you, if you sort of say age group from zero to ten and, you know. You know, I was just thinking if you get idea on their age groups, I wish, yeah. You're going to get all mums and dads answering what they'd like to see, but you're not going to get little Johnny or.
Well, you're not going to get little Johnny or Jenny because the five year old is going to go to a teddy bear's picnic, potentially isn't going to be answering.
You never know, you've not met my grandchildren.
So in relation to practicalities of that.
Yeah, I think we, I think we're, well, certainly going to put something out which asks them an age bracket.
Yeah.
As you go, I think we, we didn't go any lower. Top sixteen for obvious reasons, but.
Because some mums and dads take, take into consideration what little one, little people like. Oh, we'd like to take the show, we'd like to take into this. That's what I'm trying to say, I'm, you know me, I'm not very good with words.
I think we've got quite a variety of age group events, you know, have been bounced around and, yeah.
I, I think, I can see what Jenny's saying, it was my favourite for you.
Always. Be interesting to.
Here one, but you don't know. So here, here's a big music festival, which we never can do. Do you know what I mean?
So you're not coming to Teddy Bear's?
I, I, I think it's been realistic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the food store, man.
Hmm.
But, but I think, um, this is the best place to construct a meaningful.
We've got them.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? That communication, so what happened with the, um, the Morris dance? But no, you know, the comments, uh, was that down to that council or was that the event somebody put marketplace for?
Basically, we got, we got asked, uh, by, um, the group, I think they were from Barry. Um, and all they wanted, because, you know, we asked, do you need anything, do you need disevo, do you need any, you know? No, we actually had a staff on duty that night, so it wasn't a case of, you know, not being in the, in the building or the city. And, and then that, we're only going to come down, we're going to do what we're going to do. They were celebrating, um, someone who danced from Wyndham down to, it was to do with, to, okay, who's not. Um, and, and therefore Amber and Casey were really interested in it and they, you know, got in touch and said, is there anything else you, you need or want to do? No, 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 that's fine. What they did do is give us some marketing information and, um, and we did put it out on our social media. But, um, I will say that the poster that they gave us did not go in the retanda. So it's something that we slipped up on in terms of that and that was our mistake. But outside that, they didn't really want, they didn't really want to make it, you know, any more than, than what it was. Which was a bit strange.
I'm a bit disappointed, you know, to do that, you have nobody there watching them or very few people. Um, and it's such a shame, it could come such a great thing. So in relation to history, I'm the Norwich London dance. It was William Kemp that was one of Shakespeare's group that actually did it. Um, and we had Michael Wag, who, um, is an actor and author, popped into the shop actually a little while ago. Um, redo it and he's actually a regular one that a lot of people do, they Morris, they dance from London to Norwich, vice versa. Um, Michael took a really interesting random route and ended up in Winchester, all sorts of places, which is quite exciting. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's regular. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's a regular thing that people do recreate.
That would have been really cool, um, St George's Day.
Committee officers update onto the final item. Have you got anything you'd like to add?
So the only thing I think we just touched on earlier, um, that town wanted me to mention was just to, um, inform you that the first phase, first phase bid has been submitted to the Heritage Mastery Fund for the Heritage Master Plan. And it is again, um, for, um, the first phase funding to help us develop the larger bid, do some micro events, trying to get some feedback, et cetera, et cetera. So that's going in. We've been told that we can expect a decision by the end of September, early October. So fingers crossed that it's successful. We have, because we are on such a tight deadline, we've taken the decision to potentially go out for, um, multi, multidisciplinary partnership. Uh, hookups, uh, to deliver that phase if we are successful. So that's already gone out. It's just trying to um, ensure that the process is not hampered by, um, or not just ended enough. So we've, we've got it done. So that's all been agreed, that's on our ten, it's in our ten process. And then, um, the main part of that is to, um, is to work up the second phase, uh, which will fund the larger capital revenue projects going forward, so.
Just tend to process explicit that if we don't receive funding, it doesn't happen.
To be honest, I haven't been party to that. It was, um, the town, the deputy town clerk that's pulled that together. Um, but I should imagine it, because we can't guarantee that we're going to be successful in October.
Terry.
Um, could we, uh, as council has been said, create a copy of the bid that's been submitted? I just think if it's in the town council's name, what best we're stressed, is that, what's going on if we're actually sent the bid?
Anything else, team? And in that case, this meeting is closed. Thank you all very, very much for your time.